All right. Like I said, thanks everybody coming out tonight. Uh, items to add to agenda. I would like to, uh, Mr. Sally's here tonight, maintenance supervisor. I would like to add him to give us some updates on the sports complex, softball and stuff like that, being in a lot of calls, so just update on that. If you don't care, maybe go for some, got any big projects coming up or something this summer? Talk about that a little bit. So I'm gonna put that as number nine. And, uh, move the rest of them down, like nine to 10, 10 to 11, 11 to 12, and so forth. So we'll add general conversation about maintenance stuff from Mr. Roberts, Robbie Sally, number nine. Anybody else got anything to add to the agenda for tonight? If not, I need a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
We're fired up tonight, y'all better be ready. We've got a motion from Mr. Sally, we got a second by Ms. Killamater, all in favor?
Opposed.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right. Approval of minutes, uh, last meeting minute meeting was January 3rd. A couple bit up ago of that. Does she have any questions, concerns? Motion for approval for that. Got a motion from Mr. Hood, got a second from Mr. Houseright, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. All right. Approval claims.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Houseright, got a second by Mr. Hood, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Public comment, does anybody wish to address the board at this time? All right. That's good. All right. Number seven, approval of inclusive plan presented by Ms. Brenda Robinette. She has the floor.
Good evening. Uh, there was just a last minute change on that. I do not need an approval tonight.
Okay.
We got a note from the State Department that said all I need to do is present it. So I'm going to present the inclusion plan. You should have a packet in each of your folders called the Virginia Inclusive Action Plan. It's a state mandated plan to improve inclusion for diverse students. The plan is good for two years from 2022 through 2024. This will be an ongoing process every two years. All schools had to meet with their staff to develop an individual school plan, and then the schools came together to develop a county plan. The plan has been reviewed by teachers, principals, assistant principals, IDEA 504, preschool, and gifted advisory committees. Areas highlighted in yellow in the plan are the areas designated for improvement. So any highlight you see in yellow are the things that we intend to work on. There are 10 distinct areas, including vision and vocabulary, legislative and accountability, tier one instruction by classroom teachers, student-centered decisions, staffing and scheduling, effective use of resources, collaboration among educators, specialized support, social inclusion, family and community engagement, and sustaining inclusive success. The results of the faculty survey has strengths and weaknesses which are found on page 20 of the handout. The teachers and administrators in Scott County determined that Scott County Public Schools has a clear and consistent vision for students with disabilities based on student need. Scott County Public Schools excels at including families of students with disabilities in decision-making progress. Scott County Public Schools has a continuum of services options to meet student needs with a preference for services provided in the general ed classroom when appropriate. Teachers use a variety of instructional strategies to meet the needs of all students. Scott County Public Schools has a school-wide behavioral support system in place. On page 21, the focus of improvement includes Scott County Public Schools will improve resources such as teaching manuals, professional development, and access to relevant materials for special ed teachers. We will work to improve a model site for teaching professionals and parents to have a better understanding of inclusion. We will strive to provide more opportunities for self-contained students to engage in general education with their general education peers. We will work together to create a common vocabulary to be used throughout schools. We will work to schedule more formal opportunities for shared planning times between regular education and special ed teachers. And we will encourage the utilization of Title I and reading specialist interventions prior to making referrals to special education. Strategies for improvement include plans to increase in-school instruction for 2223. We will work to identify and provide intervention strategies for students struggling through Title I services with reading specialists prior to making special ed referrals. We're going to provide after-school remediation programs free of charge at all elementary schools. We will work to plan and provide more collaboration opportunities between teachers. We will work to provide high quality professional development to teachers and paraprofessionals. We will work to provide access to teachers manuals to all teachers. Utilize exemplary teachers as mentors and allow teachers time to observe exemplary classrooms. We will work to improve transition services fostering inclusion in the work environment. Planned professional development activities will include for the years 22 through 24, instructional technology, uh, webinars from the Department of Education, major clarity for local job site tours, major clarity training on the Virginia five Cs, book studies, math talks, CIP, which is instructional curriculum, dyslexia training, gifted education training, training on benefits of inclusion practices, Hagerty reading training, fetal alcohol, uh, professional development pertaining to drug babies, and professional development pertaining to transition. So, lady and gentleman, that is the inclusive planning program that we intend to develop for Scott County Public Schools over the next two years. Any questions?
These been in place, pretty much always been in place for quite a while now, right?
We do a lot of this. The things that were not highlighted in yellow, we feel like that we're really good at, the things that are highlighted in yellow, we felt like we're doing them, Mr. Houseright, but we need to improve on them.
What we've done about vocabulary?
Vocabulary, when it comes to inclusion for special ed children, just lets our parents know what the vocabulary means. Like if we were referring a child for special education, we're looking at their, their needs to determine whether we need to evaluate them or not. What eligibility means for a student with a disability is that we complete testing on those children and then talk to the parents about whether they qualify for special ed or not. The other types of vocabulary that the state of Virginia want all schools in the state of Virginia to have are words such as praise, encouragement, how to build the children up. They want positive interventions instead of negative so that all schools can work toward helping children with their self-concept and feeling good about themselves, helping them to realize that all children are smart, it's just we have to reach them and help them achieve. So that's the type of common vocabulary they want to see in each and every school.
So these ten areas to improve was not identified by the state, but we just, we said dope.
The state came up with, the state came up with the 10 categories. They came up with all the questions that you can find on the left side of the packet. Then we had to sit down with each school to evaluate whether we felt like we were already doing that, achieving that, whether we were good at that, or whether we need to do some additional things to make improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Robinette. And thank, uh, Sir Gray McConnell, Kelsey Taylor, Jennifer May, Chris Stapleton, Stacy Wood, we're a few of them. And I appreciate y'all coming up with that. All right. Next up, approval of school calendar and fringe benefits presented by Ms. Kelsey Jones. We might have a little sidekick too.
I'm assuming, I don't, I don't want a calendar, is it not up here? In your packet, you will see the school calendar that the committee came up with. Are there any questions?
Close to same as any major differences in this year?
Not, not that I could tell, no.
Couple of changes there, will be finished in first semester.
Yes, that is actually a huge change.
Years past, we carried that in January, but will end in December, which was a lot of feedback on our committee and what they.
For secondary schools, it is next to impossible to end that first semester after Christmas. Um, you basically lose them over Christmas break for two weeks and then try to rein them back in and get a nine-weeks test in there after they've taken their SOLs and had two weeks off. Was not conducive.
Somebody else on board have a problem with that? I don't see a problem. Do we approve that individually?
Yes, the calendar for this year, and then Ms. Jones, so everybody can discuss the which may be a recommended option.
Anybody got any more questions about the calendar? No, I need a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Mr. Sally. A second from Mr. McConnell, all in favor? Opposed. Motion carried.
Also in your packet is a summary of the fringe benefits that, um, were proposed by the committee. Not sure if there's any questions on those.
We'll discuss them, and, uh, looks like you come up with a good list. That means Sean, you missed, Miss Road, man the road, sidekick, that means, I can think about that.
I'm number two.
Anybody else got a question or anything on the fringes? If not, we'll look at it, and, uh, appreciate y'all's time. All right. Next item on agenda, uh, Mr. Robbie Sally's gonna give us some maintenance updates. If you don't care.
Hate to put you on the spot. I'm always prepared to talk a little. First of all, I'd say, uh, take just a moment there and say thanks to, uh, all the board members, uh, this being School Board Appreciation Month, thank you all. And on behalf of Maintenance Department, uh, I'm sure that, like many other people and positions and stuff like that, there's probably a lot of things that you all go through that nobody's really hears much about or know, and you have to deal with those, and, uh, so thank you for your time and job that you do here for the school system. The other thing I was gonna say, you know, is when you had to approve me coming up, you know, for being added to this, everybody was probably thinking, man alive, how long is he gonna talk if we leave him up here before we approve this? Uh, but, uh, I'll get right into, uh, the, some of the projects here, uh, and, as I, you know, come to the, some of the past meetings and prepared maybe for updates also, but, uh, with this here, uh, being able to be put on the agenda. We have several large projects, uh, that's, that maintenance is working on here now. Uh, and, uh, there's, there's been various struggles with, with trying to move forward with these projects. Uh, you know, I could go on about some of the struggles and things, but, uh, as far as getting into some of the things with the sports complex, uh, and some other areas as far as fields and stuff like that, some of the things, uh, that you're probably wanting to know about is, uh, one of them is the safety nets over here at the, uh, the sports complex here at Gate City. We've actually got a PO, I don't know if we actually got that back yet, we do have that submitted and it's, uh, going through for approval, but also, uh, I talked with Randy Woodward, which is the contractor that's doing that, and he has spoke with the, uh, company that he got the bid from for the poles and the nets, and he's waiting for a ship date from them for those items. Uh, we actually, as we got into that project, we talked about using the poles and the nets that's up at Gate City High School, and with those nets, or that net up there being about five years old, they said that the normal lifespan for those nets is seven to 10 years old, so they recommended going ahead and changing that. So, uh, I told them to go ahead and plan on that. Some of the fencing work that we gotta do down there for the dugouts and around the softball field is, uh, that PO was approved and contractor has that and should be ordering the material, and that should be taking place anytime. Uh, and some may know there, but we got the scoreboard moved from Gate City High School down to the sports complex for that, and then also, uh, put a new scoreboard up over at Rycove High School for the girls softball field also. Uh, the lights that we're doing through Musco, uh, that's just been a, a real challenge, uh, mostly because of the wet weather, uh, with the cranes that has to get onto those surfaces to be able to reach those lights and set the poles, plus change the lights out. We're doing the upgrade on the football fields for, uh, Rycove and Twin Springs. Uh, it's been a real challenge, and if you've not gone there, you might not want to go there right now. It's, uh, for us to get the weather to get that straightened up, we're certainly, uh, hoping for some dry weather to be able to do that. We've got some equipment to help us out on that, and we've been using that some this week, so we're working on that too, but, uh, with the size of the equipment and everything, it's, it's, uh, it's quite a mess. And we got a mess at Rycove, we got a mess at Twin Springs, we got a mess at Gate City High, we got a mess at Sports Complex, uh, and planning on getting also to Twin Springs and doing some work on the batting cage up there for their baseball field, and if it don't dry up, we're gonna have a mess up there. So, uh, so we're, we're working to try to get all of those things done. Uh, also, uh, got the concrete sidewalks to pour down here at the, uh, at the sports complex, and then also, there's been some talk about another pad over at the soccer field, and, uh, that's something that, uh, I've not been given the go-ahead on there, uh, so I'm, I'm waiting for that, if, if we're gonna get that done. And, and that's, uh, and that leads me into some other projects here, what we're doing with some of the ESSR funds, and then also just with some school funds. Uh, I do have some of those listed on a paper here, if you all would like those, I could give those to you, uh, just so you all could see some of the things that, uh, that we're working with, and then also, uh, some of the costs associated with these items. I left one on my book back here. I did. But anyways, uh, with these items, I, I mean, I could just talk so long about these items right here. Uh, you know, this right here gets into where, you know, we had a budget meeting back in October, and we talked about some of these items, and really truthfully, we ain't had no meetings since then, and so kind of, I've been doing what I can to move forward with some of them, but, uh, you know, whenever it comes time to the budget, I, I don't know everything about all the dollars that's in that and stuff, and, and maybe I don't need to know, but I, I gotta have approval to move forward. And, you know, whenever I total this up between the budget cost, and some of these are actual prices, and then there's variables in some of those prices that, you know, really and truthfully, needs to be discussed, uh, and then the amount of grants and the amount of budget funds that we have for that, we're about $1.2 million short. So these are items that I've had on the list for quite a while, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in a position where if, if we don't give the go-ahead to people that, that we kind of got lined up for this, we ain't gonna get it done. And there, there's just multiple situations. So sit up here and to tell you about all of them, you just ain't got time, you don't want me to stand up here and talk about all that. But, uh, you know, like security entrances, you know, that's one of the things that the architects called me back on January 3rd, they said, if we're gonna have a chance to get any security entrances put in any of these schools in this summer, we need an answer. This HVAC projects that we're working on, I'm working on, uh, that, this has been about 11 months now that I've been working on that, and we ain't done the first bit of work yet. We just got the bid in this week. I say we ain't done a bit of work, we've not installed anything, there's been a lot of work done, but we've been 11 months getting to this point. So, uh, lead times, uh, contractors are, are so busy, uh, you all know the story on all that stuff, but, I mean, to, to give somebody an answer today, we might be lucky to get it done in a year. So that's what, you know, I, I spoke back in September and I said, I need answers on things now. You know, I, I can't wait. Uh, I've talked to, uh, some people here at the Career and Tech Center, for an example. We've had trouble with the gearbox down here, and as a matter of fact, one day I thought I was about to call Mr. Ferguson and say, you're gonna have to close school, because we ain't gonna have no heat for the school. And to get another gearbox is a nine-month wait time. Nine months. No heat in Career and Tech Center. How would that be for us? Uh, so, that's a project though, that I've got on HVAC upgrades, that I really need, need to be able to provide more information to the engineers and to, to contractors if we're gonna try to do that. Uh, in that price where you see HVAC upgrades, we had five projects on our list for that, and we ended up prioritizing three of them. Actually, Career and Tech Center was number four, and then we've had this gearbox issue. Then you want, you know, you want to talk about the priority of it or whatever, but really truthfully, that, that's been discussed between me and the guys down the shop, so it's been discussed between. Uh, so, but with that, just for budget costs, for the other two projects that we had on that HVAC upgrades project, uh, need to add $632,000 to that $1.9 million. So you're talking about, uh, a little over 2.5, close to 2.6 million. Now, for me, I know we got a line item in the budget, plus I know we got some grant funds for that, but there's answers that, that I'm kind of waiting on about the grant funds that I don't have, but I really don't know how much money I got in that. It's hard for me just to move forward with that answer. Uh, because I don't feel like that, that I'm in that position to do that. If I'm in that position to do that, then, uh, I, I need to be given that, uh, I need to be told that. The, the same thing about the security entrances, I know we got $2 million for that. All right. The first price I got for the small project was 2.95. The large price was 3.95. So we're either gonna be a million dollars over budget, or we're either gonna be $2 million over budget, over what we've received grant funds for. Now, if we've got all that in the budget, shoot, I'm ready to move on. Uh, but they're waiting on me. And so, uh, there's a lot of, lot of details in all these projects that you're looking at. Uh, and that's kind of an, an update on the large projects. There, there's some other things too of how I have it down there, uh, as far as what I have in the, in the budget there. I've got a miscue on that, but whenever we look at that budget number on that one of that $107,000 there, that's, that's a little bit, once again, there's a lot of details in that, uh, because we've spent a lot of money, I just listed that on there as a line item to give us that total of the 6.3. Uh, but there's a lot of details to be discussed in that. So, uh, for my update on projects, I guess I'll sum it up instead of continuing on with this, of saying that, you know, the sports complex and stuff like that, uh, Scotty Vermillion and I, Mr. Vermillion at, at the high school, uh, we, we kind of exchanged some email, emails back in November, and I told him what I would have done, and he was satisfied with that. And I told him, I said, I may not have it done before the first practice, but I'm gonna plan on having it done before the first game. Uh, just because of the winter weather and all that stuff, and then, you know, the workload, and, and while I'm saying that, whenever you look at these projects right here, it's just like those HVAC upgrades, they're gonna try to get that done this summer. The amount of work that we have committed to through the maintenance department, through the electricians I got, the HVAC guys I got, plumbers, carpenters and stuff like that, is just, it's a, it's a huge amount of work. With that, you know, we need to get that kitchen remodel done over at Rycove High School terribly bad. All right. We got violation after violation after violation from the health department on that. So that's what we're trying to get that done. Once again, maintenance has a huge responsibility in that project. Uh, whenever you look at some of these other projects, maintenance is responsible for it, maintenance is responsible for it, maintenance is responsible for it. Uh, so, you know, for those guys down there, kudos to those guys that, that work down there for maintenance also, they do a lot of work, a lot of it's unseen. Uh, it's kind of like us, you know, who knows, who knows what we're really presenting to bill until the lights go out, right? Everything's good till the power goes off. Uh, but, uh, so those guys, they really, they, they really, uh, put out a lot of work, and that's just like the HVAC upgrades, I mean, there's a huge amount of that project that is actually labor, you know, so there's a lot of that work that we're saving in labor by the work that we're doing, and, uh, so like to, to give a little kudos to those guys as I'm, uh, talking also here about some of these projects. But we're gonna continue on and, uh, hopefully with, uh, some more answers, then I'll get some more guidance there on, on what I need to do there, uh, about approving other jobs for the architects and other, uh, jobs that I do. I've got some RFPs out there and stuff like that, that I did some pre-bids on, getting ready to get some more seal bid in, and I don't really have an answer for that job, but I went through the motion just in case. So, uh, so I, I hope that we can move forward, and with the timelines, I hope that, it's just like these security entrances. You know, in that, we're looking to, uh, to do that work at Gate City High, Gate City Middle, uh, Twin Springs and Rycove High. You know, if we don't get some of those things put in this summer, and what we've talked about doing, you know, is, is one thing, but i- if we don't get that done this summer, we're kind of affecting, what, 1,600 kids between those schools? We're, we're affecting that many kids if we don't get those security entrances in. You know, we can, we can provide some extra security for each one of those schools, but we gotta have answers to give other people, to give people that's gonna be helping with the work.
We'll be discussing this, thank you, man. We'll be discussing it, we'll get you an answer. Thank you. All right. Moving around long, superintendent before I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the board, as, as was made mentioned earlier, February is School Board Appreciation Month, and I just want to take the time to recognize our board members and say thank you for what you do for our school system and for our students. And through the Virginia School Board Association, they have, uh, provided a certificate to recognize each of you. And with that, at this time, I wanted to recognize Mr. David Templeton, our chairman from Region, uh, from District One.
Thank you, man.
Mr. Steve Sally, our vice chairman, from the Second District. Mr. Steve Sally, our vice chairman, from the Second District.
Thank you.
Ms. Gillenwater, representing our Third District.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill House driving, representing our Fourth District.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representing our Fifth District, Mr. Dale McConnell.
Thank you.
And this is Sixth District, Mr. Robin Hood.
Thank you.
Be with us, join me in giving our board members round of applause, please. And also with that, we have two ladies over here to my right, that the week of February 13th to the 17th, 2023, is School Board Clerk and Deputy Clerk Appreciation Week. And these ladies here keep a record of our school board meetings for future reference. I just want to take the time to recognize our School Board Clerk, Ms. Kim Henderson, and our Deputy Clerk, Sherry Christian. Thank you all very much.
They help keep this record, that helps a lot. Thank you.
In your, we'll continue on, in our packet, you will see that we did make application for this National School Lunch Program, and we, in fact, did receive equipment grant monies in total of, in a total of $120,558.54, which includes Gate City Middle School serving line, Rycov High School reach-in freezer, Twin Springs High School walk-in freezer, and Weber City Elementary School walk-in freezer. So that is, that is excellent compared when you look at the list and those school divisions who did receive these funds, grant funds, so that will help offset some of the costs that Mr. Sally had made mention there with some of the upgrades. So very proud of that fact. The next item we have is the Head Start Financial Report for December 2022, and this is a preliminary report. And what I need to do, unless there's any particular questions in regards to this, I need to ask approval as presented.
Motion would approve. Got a motion from Mr. McConnell, got a second from Mr. Sally, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Next item we have is the Time Act, or excuse me, Head Start Director's Report for January Does anyone have any particular questions in regards to the Director's Report? And the next item we have is the ACF PIHS 2301, meaning January 2023. This is a federal notice, a final rule to the Head Start HSPPS 1302-47B9. This is supplementary information on establishing evidence-based COVID mitigation, COVID-19 mitigation policy, and this is, we didn't need approval for this, did we, Kim? Just for informational purposes. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that document?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all that I have. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. All right, my understanding, we need to go into closed meeting.
Yes, I moved to enter the closed meeting to discuss candidates for employment and the assignment and performance of coaches, custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria staff, mechanics, central office staff as provided in Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia Amendment.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, we're going to adjourn for a while. Thank you all.